Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and today we are joined by Team Colin and Julie from Get Oiling. And we have a very special guest today. We have Chrissy, founder of Grow Workspace. Hey, guys.
What's up?
Everybody.
So we're really excited to be here today with you. We don't want to keep you for too long unless you need hands-on help. We will stick around to help you. I know we've got convention going on right now as we speak, so I want to honor your time. Now, today, we have a really exciting announcement to make. So for those of you who have been hiding under a rock for the last week and a half or so, and didn't know that we have partnered up with Grow Workspace to give away something absolutely incredible for you guys who are serious about growing your business. If you didn't know, now you do. And we are extending this promotion. So this was going to end at the end of Aroma Sharing. It is now extended through the end of convention. So Monday, what day is that? Monday, the 21st at like midnight or something like that. So through Monday, you have a chance to enter and win. And I'll have a website to send you guys. We've got Chrissy here today to talk about what's included in this and how you can really enter twice, right? We've got our way to enter. Grow Workspace has their way to enter. So you can double up your chances of winning today. So for those of you first, I guess, you know, for anyone who doesn't know about Grow Workspace yet, Chrissy, could you let us know a little bit about Grow Workspace and then tell us about what we're giving away?
Yes, perfect. Yeah. So if you don't know Grow Workspace, we are the perfect companion to Get Oiling. So Get Oiling is going to hold all of the content. We are the content. So, you know, I know a lot of people with Get Oiling stock their member areas with, I feel like I have a Facebook thing open because it's pinging in the back. I apologize. There we go. It's gone. We have pre-made classes, webinar slides, scripts, sway links, which most people are like, what's that? It's really a beautiful presentation of young living products that you can give access to someone via one URL, one simple link. So we love to integrate these into Get Oiling in various ways, embed them into a landing page, if you know what that means, using the texting campaigns and just text out the link to lots of people at the same time. Or through email, we use the sway links for classes and newsletters. So it's pre-made content for you. It's designed for, you know, you guys would want to take advantage of the Platinum Plan. So it's definitely designed for someone who's a little bit more experienced in their business. They're willing to learn the tech behind Get Oiling to get all of that set up or hire help or already a little bit techie. But the cool thing is you don't have to be super techie because we create the content in Get Oiling in our very own account. And then we just give you the share link. And so you click on that link and literally within seconds, the whole bundle is uploaded into your Get Oiling account. So it actually removes a lot of the tech challenges that might happen. And then we have lots of great guides to help you walk through, you know, just editing these little pieces. So, you know, whether you're tech challenged or you're kind of learning the tech, we've got a lot for you over three years worth of content. So literally a topic for everything to just make your life a lot easier. It would be a lot to hire a graphic designer, a copywriter, a business strategy coach, you know, someone for marketing. We do it all for you at a really affordable price. And we have a 14-day trial for those that want to try the annual option, once they're done with the trial, where you can try everything for free. So there's really, you know, it's a no-brainer to get started. And then we have the convention special, which is going to be extended through actually the month of June. So we've extended it through the entire month to give you guys time. Let's let you get busy with convention and be focused on that. So you have the entire month. If you start your trial within June, you will get that convention deal, which saves you $100 on that annual plan. It's $247 normally for US English, US Spanish, and Canada, all of those markets, brings it down to $147. If you keep, continue on past that 14-day trial, you can cancel, you know, in that trial anytime. So there's the skinny on that. And then the giveaway that we have to be able to enter, the information for to enter on our end for kind of that double entry is on our website, growworkspace.com. There's only one W. So the GRO is just G-R-O and then workspace.com. And we have a video there that tells you all about the giveaway and a little button to do the final piece of giving us your information, saying we can share your email with Get Oiling, which everyone has said yes so far. So everyone wants to be in the grand prize. But the piece that we are contributing to the grand prize is three months free of Grow Workspace. So if you did end up purchasing the annual plan, we could prorate that back for you. So three months free. And then also my Build a Blissful Business course, which is really, you know, a foundational course of what you need to launch your brand and your business online. So you're going to get that course, which is valued at $397. Awesome, awesome there. And then three private sessions with me, 30-minute private sessions. So it's hard to get private coaching with me. I'm telling you, I don't take hardly any people. So this is a real treat to be able to connect with you three different times for 30 minutes and work on some business strategy coaching, which is what I love and my specialty to help you work more efficiently in your business as you get it up and going. Ashley, do you want to share the added part from Get Oiling's side?
Yeah, absolutely. So in addition to that, we are giving away three months of Get Oiling Premium. This is our most popular plan. This is the plan that really unlocks everything for you. It gives you everything that you need to build out your member area, to serve your prospects, your customers, and your brand partners, as well as branding your site to you and the way that you want it done. And to that end, you're also going to get access to my personal branding intensive. We've been running this for the past four years here. This will be the fourth time or the fourth year that we've run it specifically for Young Living. But I've been running a version of this branding bootcamp going all the way back to 2012 in network marketing generally. And it's something that, you know, depending on the level of work with me that's involved, it could be valued as high as $900. You're also going to get access, just like you do with Chrissy in Build a Blissful Business, you're going to get three sessions with me privately as well. And so what you get when you put all of this together is, as you guys created this amazing image that I saw earlier during Aroma Sharing, you've got content for your website, which is Grow Workspace, website for your content, which is Get Oiling. And put all of that together with brand and business strategy between the two of us, guys, this is priceless. Having everything that you need, like basically to implement everything that we would be, you know, advising you to do, right? Everything that we're recommending that you do to put yourself out there, to brand your site, to brand yourself, to strategically get out and reach people who would become your future customers. Really, really excited to be able to offer this. And if you want to learn how to enter on the Get Oiling side, if you go to getoiling.com/convention2021, you're going to see all of our promos that are available now through the end of convention, Monday night. And then at the very bottom, you're going to see the grand prize giveaway. And that's going to take you to another page. It's going to take you through all of the exact steps that you need to follow. You need to make sure you're paying attention to enter into this. There are a number of different steps. But like Chrissy said, you've got a way to enter on their side and a way to enter on our side. So we're really excited to give this away and do this drawing to make one very lucky person just enormously equipped to grow this year. All right. And I think you just responded to the question there in the chat about where to find the sways. Awesome. Chrissy, thank you so much for being here. I know you've got to run. You guys stick around. We're going to do a little bit of training. It's Nika. I know we've got a website review today with you. So you guys stay tuned. Chrissy, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you guys inside your workspace.
Yes.
Bye.
Awesome. All right. So if you guys have questions, if you came here today, thank you, Ilka and Paula, for the questions. If you guys came here today with questions, if you need help with something, please go ahead and say so in the chat. We are here to help you. We're excited to see you. Get your upgrade to annual, join the Personal Branding Intensive. That's one of the things, if you go over to getoiling.com/convention2021, you'll see all the details of the things that you can get. If you are an existing member, we've got stuff for you too. If it like, this isn't just about like, hey, come buy things, spend more money. We're giving you guys stuff. If you're already a member of Get Oiling, log into your dashboard and go get access to those freebies that we have for you. I have personally worked with clients of mine who are leaders in this company to help develop resources that you can use and plug into your Get Oiling system. And you get access to those things for free, including a training that's going to start next week after the weekly work session with Jackie McLaughlin, Platinum Leader in Young Living. We're going to talk about the business strategy behind her Platinum business and how she runs so efficiently. It's going to be a four-week training, you guys, and you're going to get the resources that she uses in her Get Oiling system, like her follow-up plans and scripts and things like that that she uses. So really, really, really exciting stuff. We've also got an opportunity, a business opportunity page and video made by the amazing Sarah and Janelle of Simple Grace Collective. Guys, I don't know, quick show of hands. Have you guys gotten that video? Have you seen the video that Janelle and Sarah did? It is phenomenal. That is one of the best business presentations I've seen for Young Living ever. It's really, really good. And you get access to it right now if you're a Get Oiling member. So make sure that you go and you download that page. And then finally, you guys have met Jessica Doman here on the weekly work session several times. She has an amazing gold business that she runs in just a few hours a week using social media, but in a way that doesn't absolutely take over her life. And you can get, again, if you're a member with us already, you get access to this. If you're going to be a member, if you're thinking about signing up, let this be a reason to help you get started. Jess has a training that we did together showing exactly what she does in her Get Oiling system through every stage of her pipeline, moving from someone who's curious, who's just a friend on social media, all the way through to getting them started as a new customer on a central award. So let's or subscribe and save. These things, they're changing. Anyway, so you guys make sure, make sure you go get access to those things. When you sign into your dashboard, just to answer that question, and let me make sure that I am actually giving correct information right now. I don't think this has been taken down. Nope, it has not been taken down. Let me show you real quick. If Zoom will allow me. And then I want to go into a little bit of brief training because today, actually, I wanted to share with you guys a way that you can get one-on-one work with me on growing your team and getting your team growing together. So this right here, so on Thursdays, you see this reminder that we're going to have our weekly work session. So there's that. This convention special is right up here. All you got to do is click this. If you're already a member, it's going to take you over here where you can click off to Jackie's site and get started. Click off to Jess's site, get started with hers, and click off to Simple Grace and get access to their business opportunity page. So you have to actually register on their sites to get access to those freebies. And for those of you who don't have access yet, we have a free course for you, How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook. You can click that, go take that course. It's got all the templates and training that you need. If you have been through this and I see some familiar faces, let us know in the comments how that's going for you, how much you love what you got out of that course. Dustin for Diamond is a 30-day email training program that you would get access to. And of course, our weekly work session, which if you're here today, right now, you already know about this. One more thing, you guys, this is, this is the giveaway we were just talking about with Chrissy. And you can come over here to this page and get all of the details and learn all of the steps that you've got to follow. Look at all these fun gifts. Canva is so fun. I've been converted. But, but one more thing, and this is through this coming Monday night. If you are an existing member on monthly, if you upgrade to annual at your existing plan level, you will be able to get access at Basic and Above to a private coaching group that I run once or twice a year. That's the Personal Branding Intensive we were just chatting about with Chrissy. You can also get access to this if you are an existing member at annual and you renew. So if you want to upgrade, if you want to renew, so that you can get access to this branding intensive, it's going to start in August, the second week of August. On Tuesdays, we're going to have live office hours at noon. And you'll have my eyes on your work as you go through this. You can reach out to support, support@getoiling.com. And you can get your upgrade taken care of so you can be a part of this intensive. It's always a lot of fun, always a great group, and we're really, really excited to do that again. So Ilka, maybe re-opt in on those pages. I haven't heard about any of them not working. Just, yeah, do that. And of course, send a message to them because they have contact forms on their site on those confirmation pages, just in case you aren't receiving that information when you opt in for those things. Yes, Holly, you will be able to participate again, and we look forward to seeing you there. Okay, so real quick, I'm going to go through, for those of you who, everybody probably missed it. I don't know. Maybe, did any of you catch me at the Aroma Sharing, the stage, the live stage thing? I don't see anyone's face here that is familiar, except for maybe one. Hi, hello. Okay, so I'm going to show you guys real quick something that I've come up with that I want to make available to you. If you're serious about growing your team, we'll be running this as a promotion going into the future. So there'll be more, you know, I'll do a video of this that we'll publish separately. But I do want to make sure you guys know about this because if you're here right now, I know you're serious about growing your team. And I want to give you every opportunity possible to get on the right track so that you can get that done. Because it's often a lot more simple and straightforward than we allow it to be. The answers to so many of the problems that we face are actually simpler than we, than we allow them to be. So let's, I want to run through this real quick. And then I'm going to turn off my videos for a better recording quality team. If you could do that with me, that would be super helpful. All right. So here's what we talked about on stage at Aroma Sharing. And I wanted to make sure that you guys had access to this as well. These are the secrets to building a successful team using Get Oiling. And I am going to kind of blow through some of this a little quickly, just because a lot of you guys already know me and you already know the platform. So forgive me if I go a little fast. I want to make sure that we get all the way through to the end here. So you can see the three main ways that you can be growing your team with us. And then I want to give you an opportunity to work with me one-on-one. So make sure that you stay tuned to the end of this to get access to that. So first, this is me. Hello, hi. For those of you who don't know anything about me other than you hear my voice or see my face every week. For the last 10 years, I've partnered with companies, top leaders, and service providers in the network marketing industry. So on the backend and working with top leaders in a number of different companies. And in the last, you know, three, four years exclusively with Young Living. And I've traded tens of thousands of distributors on how to brand yourself and grow your business online. And since 2017, I've been partnered with Greg and Amanda with Get Oiling and with Young Living Leaders to help you guys grow, right, to know what's working right now and to help you translate that to smart systems that work in your business using the amazing software that Greg and Amanda have developed. So what is Get Oiling? For those of you who don't know, it's your complete business and marketing management platform built by and for you. We don't do this for other oily companies. We don't do this for other network marketing companies. This was built for you guys. And we've been serving thousands of Young Living distributors of all ranks since 2015, totally customizable to your branded business, and we are designed to serve you from wherever you are, distributor to Royal Crown Diamond. Are you in Mexico or Belgium or the Philippines or Chicago or wherever? We are everywhere with you, no matter where you are in this business. And we show you how to get it all done, like we do on this Get Oiling Weekly Work Session. And we are so committed to helping you become incredibly successful with Young Living. And that's why every feature in our platform was developed because so many of us struggle trying to fit these different pieces of a puzzle together. How to market this, how to promote that, how to communicate here, inform there, Facebook here, text there. And so much of this stuff just doesn't fit together. And you wind up spending more time managing your business than you actually do on the stuff that makes you grow. And we want you to be able to release the time freedom that this business can afford you. So now you can build a business that works for you on your terms, right? You don't have to be a tech whiz or a social media guru or a graphic or web designer to get this done either. So what we have, if you don't know, we have pre-built websites, campaigns that send out messages automatically, email and text marketing capabilities, tools to keep you organized and lead your team, live and online events. If you're doing vendor events, if you're doing make and takes, if you're doing things virtually, you can do it all inside of one platform and a private member area with online classes. If you want to sell your information or you simply want to take your member education off of Facebook groups, we've got that covered. And of course, again, we train you how to use them. You got your contact manager at the heart of everything that you do with follow-up plans to keep you on the ball, time-saving template features like saved replies. Honestly, that's like the unsung hero of our platform, in my opinion. We've got brand yourself level customization so that you can make your Get Oiling site look however you want it to, behave however you want it to. You don't have to hire a coder or, you know, 27 different WordPress plugins that you've got to manage. You've got it all in one system. You can import gorgeous content like from our friends at Grow Workspace, who you met earlier today. You've got a blog to differentiate yourself, attract new leads, and you can track the income-producing work that you're doing and keep accountable with that digital upline coach. And you guys, so much more. Thousands of hours of training and coaching and advice on our YouTube channel where you can dig deep or just choose to go with one thing at a time and help us, help you, have us help you save time in your business so that you can get more done. So you can customize how you use us to fit your needs, exactly where you are, or just use what's already done for you to start sharing Young Living right away using our built-in themes, right? And did I mention we're duplicable? Everything that we do is capable of duplication because just about everything that you have in our platform that you would use, you can literally copy and share as a resource with someone on your team in their own Get Oiling account. You can actually share the same information, perform the same things, literally duplicate the same stuff that works, right? So what we want to do for you is take the guesswork out of duplication and make your business building simple and fun. Because why wouldn't you want your business to be simple and fun? You're doing what you love. We want you to love what you do. So when you start at any plan level, you get those resources and training like I shared with you today, courses and templates for your system, this weekly live training that we do every single week on Thursdays, and world-class support from our incredible team and a satisfaction guarantee. And those plans start as low as a dollar for your first month. You guys, make sure you're sharing this with your team. Give them the tools to be successful as well. You have a referral link in your dashboard that also gives you both a free month to share, right? And plans that can be as low as $7 a month. If you are just getting started and you're not really ready to get techie, you can just use a contact manager and stay on top of your organization. And it is worth just infinitely more than that seven bucks to make sure that you don't lose those opportunities that are always present when you are out there communicating and chatting and talking with people and sharing the oils that you use. All right. So there are three things that you need to do to create a successful team. And I'm going to show you a few of these things. And just because this is a weekly work session, we do kind of, you know, we've got a ton of training on each of these things. So if you want to dive deeper into any of these, I encourage you to search on our YouTube channel or to hit the little question mark down at the bottom right of your dashboard when you're logged into Get Oiling so that you can learn more about these different features and how to use them. So first, you got to get yourself organized. If you want to duplicate on your team, you got to do the right stuff first, right? So you've got to get organized first. And then you've got to plug them into shared resources. Remember, if we are, if we're not doing the same things, we're never duplicating, right? And then we need to give them a simple sharing tool. If we're all using the same thing, we all grow the same way and duplicating is simple. So first, we gotta get organized. So your team is going to duplicate how you work, right? Does that make sense? Everybody talks about duplication in this business or wanting it, right? We want to see compounding growth and it's possible, right? We want those multiple legs with massive volume because you're doing such an amazing job of sharing these products, right? We can do this if we work correctly, right? Our people can work correctly if we do. So we want to make sure we're working smart by keeping the engine that runs your business organized. And that engine are your contacts. This is a network marketing business. A lot of us put the marketing first and forget that it's a network. So our network is the thing that fuels our business. This is a people business. That means that we got to keep our people organized. And at the core of the Get Oiling system is your contact manager. So when you're using your contact manager, what I want to encourage you to do when you are getting someone started, so someone who is already a customer in your organization, they're ordering product, they're loving product, and they express an interest in sharing and they want to start making some money with Young Living, with you, working with you as a team. Tag them in your Get Oiling Contact Manager as a brand partner. Have specific conversations with people who say they want to share. Tag them as a brand partner so that when you want to send out an email to people who said yes to promoting, you can easily filter your list and go and find those people who want to actually promote, right? And of course, in the future, as the VO changes, there may actually be ways for you to import this and have it done for you already with Get Oiling. We'll let you know if and when that updates on Young Living's side. You could also add a builder follow-up plan, right? So think about it this way. If somebody says yes to building and you want to get them working the right way, there are certain things that you know you want to share with them, certain information you want them to know about, right? You want to make sure that you also follow up with them at regular intervals. So is that weekly? If somebody says yes to building a business, it better be weekly, right? So you want to follow up with your customers monthly, make sure they're happy with what they've got, make sure that they are set up with their order for the following month so that they can, you know, subscribe and save and so on. With your people who say yes to building, they need to be working with you more closely. So have a weekly follow-up plan that you apply to them inside of your contact manager and then set to-dos for yourself. If you need to follow up with them on something specific, maybe setting, helping them set up their first party or their first class or something like that, you can set those to-dos up for yourself as well so that you stay on top of things. And then, of course, keep notes, keep notes, keep notes. But let me show you real quick in the contact manager what this looks like. Those are three things. We're tagging, we are applying a, we're applying a follow-up plan. And then let me sign into this other account here real quick so I can show you what this looks like. We're tagging them, we're applying a follow-up plan, we're taking notes. So real quick, this is Jane's account. I'm going to find myself in here. Here's me. Okay, so let's just say that I want to be a business builder or this person wants to be a business builder. We're going to edit and I am going to come over here to the tags and I'm going to add brand partner, which I've actually already done here. But if you wanted to do that here, we just go brand, partner, type it in, and save the changes, right? So now, if I want to go to my contacts, I can search for the filter. I go to manage and I go to filter and I type in brand partner, I can pull up all of the people who have been tagged brand partner. Now, if she, if this person has just decided that they wanted to start growing with me, I can add a follow-up plan to them. I can, and I can do that just right over here under actions in the same place that you might add mail or text. I can add a follow-up plan for them. So if I had a brand partner follow-up plan where I just got reminded weekly to follow up. And guys, if you don't have one, just a quick shortcut, rate the contact as a four and you'll get a reminder to follow up weekly. And then finally, these notes, these notes, these are so valuable. You should be keeping notes in your conversations with the people that you are talking with every single week. All right. So I think that was it for that. So let me go back over here to our this. Here we go. Okay. So that is the first part. You've got to be organized in how you communicate with them. Then you want to plug them into shared resources because being Professor Oils doesn't duplicate. If your people think that they have to know everything because they see that you know everything, they're going to wait to share until they feel like they know everything. How many of you have seen this happen? How many of you have been that person who said, oh, you know what, maybe I shouldn't start sharing until I know more about this? You don't have to know really anything other than your own story and that you love the product and that you're excited about it. That's the amazing thing about this business. You, you don't need to know anything at all. And in fact, it's easier to duplicate when you know less or you don't put on that you know everything, right? It's easier to, you know, to say, well, here's what I know or all I know is, right? That is going to be so much more effective for you than having all the answers. So when you use a shared educational resource, you're going to empower your people to learn more and point to resources that help them share. So what we do with this, like to make this work for you for duplication, is for you to create a member area. Use our class or course that we created for you, the How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook. Create a member area and stock it with the resources that you use and love. And then give your members an orientation so that they know how to use it. Then get in the habit of pointing to information instead of needing to have all the answers, right? So if somebody says, well, how do I learn more about XYZ product or this oil or this issue that I'm having? Instead of you having all of the answers, you say, you know what, hey, I've got a thing that I can share with you that actually does the talking for me a little better than I can, right? I only know this much. But here's a thing that I can point to and use a sway from Grow Workspace, like we were talking about earlier. It's a great way to do this. And you can have that embedded into your member area as well with your member education resources. And we've got examples of that in the How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook course to show you exactly how to do it. And we'll take a look at Jane's real quick here. And guys, feel free to like pop in. And guys, feel free to like pop in and interrupt me if there are any questions that come up because I cannot see them. All right, so let's look at this real quick. So this is Jane's member area. This is, I'm showing you guys an example of how you can be pointing to resources. And this is both in how you interact with people who are on your team who would be builders. And it's really most important that you interact with them the correct way because they're going to do what you do. They're going to duplicate. They're going to follow your lead, right? So here's what I love doing and having clients do is, is right here. If somebody says, well, how do I log into the VO? How do I place an order? How do I do X, Y, or Z? How do I find this resource, that resource? You say, hey, well, it's actually right over here. Let's go into, I'll show you where it is. Lead them to where it is and then let them read it themselves. Don't be the arbiter of information, be the conduit, right? Be the, be the person who is pointing to the resource. So come over here and then show them, you know, how to place an order, right? Like, and you could just write it out. This isn't even a video. This is just written with screenshots. And of course, this will need to change whenever Young Living is done with its changes for the website. Even more importantly, where we're talking about oily education. If, if you want to talk about the kits, if you want to talk about CBD, for instance, you don't know every single thing about CBD. And even if you did, you are better off pointing to something like this. So you say, hey, why don't we come over here and I will actually show you this? Or you can just go ahead and grab your link here and send this sway from Grow Workspace over to them so that they could check it out, right? So that's the idea. Point to a thing that does the talking for you, even if you know the answer. You are giving them the ability to find the answer themselves. And really, really importantly, you are showing them that doing this business right is as simple as pointing to something that does the explaining, right? Showing hands, does that make sense? Pointing is not only easier, it is more effective for you at the end of the day. And it's going to help your team to grow and duplicate more easily. All right, now finally, we want to give them a simple sharing tool. So we want to let the tools do the talking to kind of extend on that point I just made. So your story, your relationships and your conversations are the things that do 99% of the work of successful sharing. The tools need to do the explaining, right? The tools are only going to be effective if you have the relationship first, right? People don't join Young Living, they join you. They stay with Young Living. But when it's time to get into the nitty-gritty of what Young Living is and how all this stuff works, you are far better off letting the tools do the talking for you. And guys, even if you know the answer, this is not Gold Star Teacher's Pet situation. We want to empower people to see that this is actually really simple. There are tools that do explaining, so you don't have to do the explaining. Even if you think this person is only ever going to just be a customer, you don't play God on this. You don't know what they're looking for or what they will be looking for in the future. Set them up for success by pointing, right? Pointing, let the tool do the talking. Because they're going to see that building this business is actually really simple if that is the way you do it, right? So how do we do this? How do we give them a simple sharing tool so that they could let the tool do the talking? We give them a Leg Builder link from your account if they're brand new, or of course, get them started with their own Get Oiling system if they're serious, right? So get a Leg Builder link for your new builder and share it with them, and then have them invite their potential customers to a call with you or with an upline to review that link together. Now, your Get Oiling account, if you didn't know, includes Zoom meetings, so you don't need anything in addition to this. And then you can have shared online educational events for your team to invite others to learn. I've got several clients who do this with great success. They, they combine their member education with an opportunity to actually be sharing and educating prospects who might be interested in getting started. So if you have your team doing, maybe using, again, Grow Workspace, for example, they've got all these amazing bundles with classes. Maybe you're going to teach one Grow Workspace bundle a month, and you let someone different on your team do the presentation each month, and everybody can invite their prospects to come learn about whatever this month's topic is. You've got such a great opportunity for people to come and not only see social proof because it's not just you that's doing it, there's all these other people who are involved. And they can see that it's actually really simple. They can get to know the team. It's just a really great thing. So I'm going to show you guys real quick what the Leg Builder links look like, where they are, and then show you an example of one of my clients who actually you guys have heard about already, who is giving away one of her resources for during this promotion, Jackie McLaughlin. She is doing this really cool thing with her team. So I'm going to show you guys both of those things real quick here. And this is going to be the, the final back office share that I do. Sorry about that. Before we do our, our website review. Okay, so Leg Builder links. So we're going to come back over here. Okay, Leg Builder links, these are right over here, left-hand column. And all this is, is a way for you to create a quick link either for, excuse me, for yourself to share the different themes. And these are all going to vary based on where you are. So the US has a lot of themes, but we also have themes for Canada. We have global themes. We've got themes for different markets. And you can actually click to view these. I've made all of these really simply. But if you wanted to create a link for yourself or someone on your team to share something that's specific for babies, maybe somebody's got a friend who's got a newborn or who's got one on the way, this would be a really great resource to share. This is already pre-made for you in your Get Oiling account. And you can click off to learn about any of these individual products from right here on the site, if I can get back to it. All right, so here's what you do. You hit create link, enroller name, sponsor name, and get their member number in here. And then all you have to do is put their name here or whatever else you'd want to put. Obviously, pick the market, pick the website theme. For now, just go with no landing page. If you don't understand how landing pages work or you don't have a strategy to use them, just forget the landing page. It's fine. Just use this as a tool to direct people to when you are, when you're sharing. So once you get that made, you can create a whole list of these things that you can grab giveaway to people on your team so that they have a simple tool to point to and share. Now, I did promise, and we do have Zoom meetings right here, by the way. And you can schedule a Zoom meeting, you can send an attendee link off. All, all really cool stuff that you can do. But let me show you on Jackie's site, under Learn More here, she's got events. And what she does is she's actually using, and it's not just Grow Workspace's content. She's got, she does use that. Her team is, is more or less taking turns every week to teach a class, right? And, and she schedules these out quite, you know, some time in advance. But different people on her team will present for each one. And so there's always something going on. There's always something to invite people to. And it's also educating members. And what she likes to do is to take the recordings from these Zoom calls and to upload those into her private member area. So there's not only those, those great resources that she has. And she does have a, a member area that's very similar to this one that I've shown you here. But, but what she'll do is she'll actually put her recordings on a page like this where she would have like promos and past educational information and that kind of thing. So real simple, you guys, what you want to do is, is keep things, keep things very simple. Make sure that you are not the one who is, you know, carrying all of the information. And then, of course, keep it, keep yourself organized and working the right way so that people can actually duplicate what it is that you're doing because you're working correctly and simply. And it's easy for them to see that they can do it as well. All right, now, this is what the point is that I was trying to get to for you guys. I want to make sure you have access to this because I know if you're here right now, you've made it this far. You are really serious about growing your team. So if you want a customized strategy for your team, if you want eyes on what you're doing so that you can see how you could actually be working more duplicably so your team can duplicate smart work too, I want you to take advantage of applying for a one-on-one call with me. We're going to get clear on the right system to use for your people, for you, so that your people can follow it, right? We're going to get a plan in place to get the tools you need to share and then get your team on the same page and duplicating. So if you go to GetOiling.com/teams, you can sign up now and apply for that call. Highly recommend if you have got a team that's growing and you feel like things are stalled or stuck, then this is the time, let's get together, let's put our heads together and get a duplication system in place for you. So I want you to take advantage of that. And of course, if you have not yet, make sure, especially if you're watching this and these promos are still live, get started, right? Get your own Get Oiling system for a dollar, GetOiling.com, a dollar for your first month. And if before Monday night, you're going to get access to all of our amazing promos. All right, so without further ado, thank you guys for sticking around. Thanks for my video back on. Hello. All right, so I would like to invite Tanika to come out and chat. We got a website review today and I'm excited to learn more about the help that you're looking for.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, good.
Good. All right. So tell me what, tell me what you're looking for today.
I just feel like I came up against like a roadblock on how to move forward with, you know, building some of the pieces that you're mentioning here because I know there's been some changes. So just wanted to kind of get some feedback because you did, you did say some very interesting things today that would probably help me out a lot. Like creating that member area where you can store like old, you know, your recorded Zoom meetings and things like that. And I think that was like the key thing that you've said the whole meeting for me.
That really is a key piece. And with, with the people that, that work with me one-on-one, that usually winds up being the key piece where we're talking about, where we're talking about member education. I think that, just to kind of, if you'll entertain this very quick little tangent, you guys, I don't know if, if you all understand how significant it is that, that Young Living has a 40% retention rate on, on customers. Like, that's a really big deal in this industry. You're lucky to get 20. And so the, the thing is, is we can, we can accidentally kind of fall into less optimal practices with how we manage our, our business and grow our team because there are some things that the company does that, that are just so good, right? Like, they do such a good job with retention that we don't necessarily see the same kind of, the same kind of data or metrics that we would in another business. So like my background is in other network marketing companies who, who would wish for, you know, even a fraction of Young Living's success with retention. And, and so I know from, from those experiences that there are certain things that you really have to do to, to be able to, to sustain growth because you got holes in the bucket. It just happened that Young Living's bucket holes are just a lot smaller than most other companies. But we, but all of this is to say is that we don't necessarily see the necessity of putting systems like that member area in place. And we wind up pouring way more time than we should, one-on-one time than we should with our, with our customers. And that's not to say that we shouldn't love on our customers. It's just that, like, the company actually does a lot more heavy lifting than we give it credit for. We just need to point to the right information. So have you begun the process of creating resources? Or I guess, let me know kind of where you're stuck so we can help move you, move you through that.
I haven't got that far. So that's, you know, that's a, a big part, like a lot of the stuff where you, that you mentioned today is like where I need to move to, where I need to move forward. Like, one of my concerns was, you know, say, for example, is there an automated process to merge like new members that join Young Living on your team from your YL account into Get Oiling? Or do you have to do the manual piece? Because I think that's where I have like a disconnect.
Got you. Yeah, so right now, we don't have a direct working contract with corporate. So there's no way to have the VO manually updated in your system. Those, those types of contracts where they do exist, they don't tend to be very long-lived and it could, they can cause really significant issues once they run up. So that's, so we actually kind of think it's a good thing that we don't have that direct integration. But what this means is, is that you're able to download your VO file. And so that is a CSV. And we actually do have, when you're logged in, let me go ahead and show you. There you are. Let me go ahead and show you the dashboard here. And, and we actually have a pretty simple walkthrough. I believe this is in System Setup, Import or Add Contacts. It's right here under Face 2. And then also, we have it right here. So this would be the emerging contacts, importing contacts. Those are all going to be right here. So, so there, there are, there are pieces of information that actually do migrate successfully into our system, such as for now, you know, Essential Rewards, right? As, as a designation, you know, whether someone is a customer, your genealogy also imports, which is really cool. So there's a, I don't know that we'll be able to see it actually in this particular account. But if you go to manage under your contacts, if you've uploaded from your VO, this little tree viewer gives you the ability to actually see your team in tree format. And since, again, this, this is a dummy account and not a real Young Living distributor account, what you'd be able to see are, you know, the names of your frontline and then their members beneath them and so on. And so you actually have the ability to see who's with whom as you grow. If you needed to maybe include or exclude certain legs of your team, that kind of thing, you can do that here as well. So there are instructions on the site that'll show you how to upload that. But, but yeah, you would be manually taking those people from the VO over into your Get Oiling dashboard.
Okay, okay. Great.
Yeah, and then, you know, from there, and this is usually the next step where, where most folks would go from there, is to, is to send out something, right? So if you wanted to, you know, send out a PV promo or, you know, this month's newsletter, if you're getting that from one of our awesome content partners, you could, you know, basically go through. And then what you would do, here, let me show you real quick. If you come in here, you would filter your contacts for, let's see, however you wanted to, right? So if, if they were a customer or a brand partner, whatever tag you have, and you can actually manage that when you upload them. So if you wanted to upload your customers, you could have that tag here. If you wanted to put your sponsor number in here or your enroller information in here, we could also pull them up that way. That's something that's going to automatically import from the VO as well. And then, of course, once you have them selected, then you can mail, if you have a saved reply from one of your, from one of the content partners, you can just pop it right in here. So maybe we have a call coming up and we want to import one of these, you know, Zoom things. We've got here is, we've got a Zoom coming up and we send it out to these contacts or something like that. So that would be the next thing. So go ahead and, and upload them and then, you know, just shoot them off an email. Let them know, hey, this is, I'm going to be sharing information with you this way. And then, of course, from there, if you get access to, and this is in your, in your dashboard right now, it would be How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook course. That is a really simple step-by-step sort of, you know, here's, here's what you do and what order to, to get all that into place.
Awesome. And then the creating classes. So I definitely need to go back and figure out how to move my group from Facebook so that I can internalize like having classes inside of Get Oiling and utilize those pieces. So I feel like I have a lot of pieces and they're just disconnected and I'm not connecting everything.
And that's okay. That's, that's such a, it's a natural place to be, especially when we think about how all of these pieces are not like, like physical things, right? They're, they're all almost like ideas, these intangible things. So be patient with yourself where that's concerned because even, even when you have a lot of it figured out, there's still usually loose ends that aren't fully tied together. Because there's, you know, it's, it's a moving dynamic thing. So, you know, what I would encourage is, is maybe, you know, obviously, start going through the How to Move Your Groups Off of Facebook course just to start designing intentionally a group that works the way you want it to. And then, and then even just, just start using your Zoom meetings, right? Instead of going live in a Facebook group to teach a class or something like that, consider using a Zoom meeting, you know, get yourself a basic Vimeo account and, and, and start saving those videos to then put into your member area. And then, of course, as you are, maybe you use the Zoom to go live in your Facebook group and you let them know on Facebook, hey, by the way, you know, if you come join over here in this member area I created for you guys, you can get all of, all of these recordings, you know, and stuff like that.
Awesome.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
Oh, I think, I mean, those are the main ones that I had when I was just going through and trying to, what do we call it? Oh, I think, I mean, those are the main ones that I had when I was just going through and trying to, what do we call it, reset? So I'm at a reset with with my business, so.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would really encourage you, just from an infrastructure perspective, to to focus on the member-serving stuff first. But don't let it, don't let it get too big or too complicated. Because, you know, the the thing that, the thing that really, you know, makes things grow is is you sharing. So keep that balance of things. And to that end, there are a couple of things that are particularly great in your Good Oil Link system just to start using to save you time. The first of which is saved replies. I mentioned that being an unsung hero. I think, I think for anyone, you know, just getting started or resetting like you are, one of the, one of the best things that you can do is go and look through your sent box, like your your Outbox and your in your email client, and and look for the things that you repeat. Look for the, you know, the 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 last, you know, 50 emails that you sent to people who are, you know, in your team or who are prospects and and copy some of that language into a saved reply so that you can just click, click and have that message already ready for you to send out to someone from Inside Drunk at Oil Link system. And that way, you know, when you are, let me show you again real quick here, what this looks like. So let's just say, for instance, I was just speaking with this person, maybe she just signed up, something like that. I want to send her an email that'll get her access to our Facebook group, because that's what we got for now. Let her know what to expect, because we've got live classes. You know, mark this on your calendar, save this email. Here's a couple of links that, you know, you want to make sure that you've got. So here's, it's like my welcome email, right? So I go to her, maybe I go ahead and tag her, because I haven't uploaded my VO yet. I'm going to call, you know, so she's a customer, if I can spell that right. She's a customer. I'm going to save that. And then I'm going to leave a note, signed up on June 17th, wants to share with her mom, save. Okay, so I want to send her a welcome message. So I'm going to grab that from Saved Replies. And I mean, these are just, we have some that are built in, like, you know, for building your own newsletters or whatever. But you want to build this in Saved Replies. And we do have videos and information on how to do that. So let's just pretend that this is the one. With all the information, it's already there. The links are there. You don't have to look for them. And then I just send it off, right? And then if I need to maybe give myself a reminder, maybe you have a follow-up plan and, you know, in 11 days, we want to make sure she got her kit or her bundle or whatever. We could use that or we could just make it to do and just say, you know what? I want to follow up with her on the 2nd of July. And this is the check-in to see if she bought her kit and then add the to-do. So like, if if you could just start using Good Oil Link this way with the people that you're communicating with, that's going to just really quickly save you just so much time. If you can create the saved replies and then just start using this so that you've got a little robot reminding you to follow up with somebody when it's time to do it. And then, and then obviously also telling you what to say, so you don't have to say it again.
Right. And so, so while you're there, I do have another question about the text messaging. So when you send out a text message, and I'm not sure if it's, if I have the account that actually utilizes this, but when you send out the text message, how do you see the replies and where do you see those replies? Like, if they were to respond to a text message that you send?
It's going to come right here, actually. So let me see. Oh, this isn't, I don't have a real phone number connected here. So if I were to send something off here right now and that person replied back, that would actually be in our two-way chat right here. And so the the cool thing is, as well, with with the system, you're, so this costs a credit, right? Or or a number of different credits, depending on how long the messages or how many images are in it. This will cost you a credit, but when she responds, if you are on your dashboard and you guys are talking back and forth, this doesn't cost you any credits at all. So if if she responds, so she she says wellness and, you know, and then she texts back and you text her back and you're doing it from right here, it doesn't actually cost you any marketing credits. It's kind of like being on Facebook Messenger, but you're talking through her phone from your device.
So, great. And so is that available on the type of account that I have? Or do you have to have a certain level? Which which plan does that come with? Because I wasn't for sure if that chat feature was.
Well, so right now, this is actually, so the chat feature, you know, if you have it, if you click it, it'll, it'll show you how to get it set up, if it's not set up yet. Normally, it's $9 a month, and you can add this to any of our plans with an add-on during, now this, this special is extended. So it's, I think when it's monthly, you get three months of, you get three months of two-way texting when you sign up for monthly or you upgrade. And then if you, if you go annual with your plan, you can get that feature for a year. So that's what, like, it's like 100 bucks. Yeah, it's $9 a month for that. And then it does cost credits, like I mentioned. If you're going to send out a text campaign or if you're sending something from like right here. But once they are, like I mentioned, if it's not like a broadcast message or a campaign message, if it's just in the chat, that's just unlimited under the two-way texting.
Cool.
Yeah. Questions? Well, I look forward to seeing what you create. I definitely take advantage of the the How to Move Your Groups course. And I look forward to, you know, seeing any questions that you have in there in that vault.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Tanika.
Alrighty.
Okay, did we have any other questions before we get going? Ilka, I'm not sure how long is the video you're talking about? I heard something, but just for 11 minutes. I think you're, you maybe you're talking about what is essentially the presentation I just gave you. Is what I did during the the live Aroma Sharing on this stage. And they do have that on their Facebook page, if you want to go back and check that out. I did the full, like, I'm going to walk you through everything. It's like 30 minutes long. Definitely a little longer than what I did today. So if you go to the Aroma Sharing Facebook page. If you, Gerald, good question. We do have a presentation on our, like, we have a deep dive into credits on our YouTube channel. Let me find that real quick, actually. I think the title of it is like the currency that runs your business or something like that. So youtube.com/getoiling. And let me see, I think if you actually search Marketing Credits on our channel, okay, yes, so it's the second one. When you do the search, let me show you real quick where it is. So if you go to our YouTube channel and you use this little search feature and you go to Marketing Credits, it's this little guy right here, Email and Text Marketing for Young Living. And we go over this in full. Now, granted, this, it's an hour and 20 minutes long. You're going to get your answers in the first 20 to 30 minutes. But Colin and Julie, do we, like, we've got a Marketing Credits, like, article, don't we?
Yeah, you know what you can do is you can just email us at Support@GetOil. And I've got a couple of resources and canned responses that I can fire off that'll explain all of the Marketing Credits in detail for you. So yeah, just send us an email.
Beautiful. Thank you, thank you. Colin, you guys have been doing an amazing job filling out that that resource section, that little question mark you guys at the bottom of your screen. Alright, y'all are so wonderful. Thank you for being here and for for sticking around. I hope everyone takes advantage of these these giveaways, in particular, that one with Girl Workspace. That's like, that's a really big one, so make sure you do that. And and then, of course, all the free stuff that we're giving away for you guys right now. And this is extended through Monday night. So we appreciate you. We are here to help you grow and we look forward to seeing you back here next week. Same time, same place. Alright, yeah, y'all take care. And and don't forget, bring your teams here. They're welcome here. This is free to anyone. That's goodoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We're here to help you guys grow. Alright. Tea? Bye-bye. Have a good week. Happy convention.